Item number one, if we could call the roll, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Luce.
Here.
Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Mayor Mars.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Mokel.
Here.
Thank you very much. Let's all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, approval of the agenda. Any additions, deletions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We'd like to request that Agenda Item 7A1 authorize solicitation of bids for downtown improvement project be moved to consent business.
Okay. Change? Any other corrections, subtraction? If not, Councilor Mokel?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Councilor Whiting.
I think the proper place for Assistant City Administrator to make that recommendation would be in the next action of what's on consent and what's off consent.
We're changing the agenda.
We're not changing the agenda. It's already on the agenda. He's asking it to be on consent.
You're going to add it to consent.
That would be in the next.
Councilor Whiting?
Mr. Mayor, I'll offer 7A1 for consent.
Not there yet.
Well, we haven't voted on that yet.
Well, we're still on the agenda. So, we have a comment by the city clerk or the city attorney.
Either way is fine.
Just your agenda, yeah.
Either way. We do have amended motion, or a motion authorizing 7A1 to be added to the consent agenda. Second, further discussion? Discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Move ahead then to item number four, the consent agenda. Any adds, deletions? Councilor Lehman?
4D and 7A1.
4D what?
4D 5. 4D 5 and 7A1 off consent. This is the point I was making earlier.
4D 5 and 7A1. Councilor Whiting?
I would offer 8B for consent. 8B unless there was some other concern from staff.
8B is a non-voting item now and is only used for informational. So, there's no council action needed for the city bill list. Any others? Councilor Whiting?
I'll offer the consent business as amended.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Councilor Lehman for the amended consent agenda. Before we vote, we will read the consent agenda as modified. For Burkett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. The consent agenda for June 6, 2017 is Item 4A1 authorizes distribution of the Canterbury Commons EAW to review agencies to start the 30-day common period. 4B1 adopts Resolution Number 7893, accepting work on the 2014 Batum Minus Trail improvements, project numbers 2014-7 and 2013-3. 4B2 adopts Resolution Number 7894, which restricts parking on County State Highway 83 and approves plans for County State Highway 83 from County State Highway 101 to south of Valley Industrial Boulevard South. 4B3 approves undergrounding of electrical power lines along County State Highway 83 from County State Highway 101 to Valley Industrial Boulevard South. Item 4C1 approves a contract with Multi-Services Incorporated for custodial services for the community center, ice arena, and youth building in the amount of $99,216 per year. Item 4C2 authorizes donation of in-kind services for the Shakopee Diversity Alliance International Festival and denies requests for waiver of fees. Item 4D1 approves the minutes of the May 16, 2017 council meeting. Item 4D2 approves a taproom, Sunday on sale, and small brewery license for Dilemma Brewing Company doing business as Shakopee Brew Hall, 126 East First Avenue upon final approved inspections. Item 4D3 approves on sale and Sunday on sale liquor licenses for Sapporo Inc., 1114 Verling Drive upon compliance with licensing requirements. Item 4D4 approves listed liquor licenses renewals for 2017, 2018, and approves waiving requirements of City Code Section 114.02I for Global Restaurant Group Inc. doing business as Dangerfields, Stone Brook Golf Club, and Knights of Columbus Home Association upon compliance with licensing requirements. And 4D6 authorizes street closure, temporary liquor license, and support of Rhythm on the Rails event.
Mr. Loney?
Mayor, Mr. Council, I believe that item on the undergrounding of County Road 83 overhead power relocation, we're recommending to just relocate them overhead.
To be relocated underground?
Right. No, to be relocated overhead. There are overhead lines. The council has the option. It's an industrial area. We did not underground 4th Avenue, and we met with all the utilities, and we recommend relocate overhead.
To stay overhead.
Stay overhead, not to go underground.
That's the recommendation that we would be approving under consent. Is that correct?
Right. That's the recommendation that I had in the council.
Long 83.
Right.
Okay, is that clarification?
Well, we did recommend...
It says underground.
See if I had a typo error there.
Councilor Lehman?
The discussion part of the memo specifically says that 1,020 feet of overhead power lines need to be done. Spuck has received the cost and accepted the cost of undergrounding or relocating overhead. So, it doesn't specify which one they're going to do.
Yeah, there's a typo error in the memo. What we wanted to recommend is we leave them overhead. So, we'll be clear on that.
And the cost is borne by Spuck or Scott County on the project?
Yes. Neither one.
All right.
Also then, 7A1 was on consent?
Mr. Mayor, I believe Councilor Lehman removed 7A1.
I took it off.
There was a... I missed one also. If I can go back and make an adjustment here, Mr. Mayor, to 4C2. I misunderstood the direction here.
4D2 or C2?
Like to discuss that.
All right. So, before we vote, I want to make perfectly sure that the overhead... Item 4B3, if we let it stand, will be approved via consent to go overhead. Is that acceptable to the motion maker in the second?
That one.
And then off consent would be 4C2, 4D5, and 7A1.
Correct.
Okay. We have read the modified consent agenda. Further comment? All in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries... or the modified consent agenda stands approved. Moving ahead to item number five. Now, we'd like to call on any resident that would like to come forward and speak on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome.
Good evening. My name is Franklin Hawes, and I have an issue with having a city sewer, a septic tank.
Can we get it and speak into the mic?
Speak directly into the mic.
Hello. How's that?
Bring it up a little bit there. There you go.
I feel like Jay Leno. All right. I live at 225 Somerville, so I look out my front door, I see the back of the library, so I'm fairly close. A year ago this month, I found out that I'm not hooked up to city sewer. I have a septic tank. And a year ago, you couldn't tell I had a septic tank because there's no pipe coming out of the ground, so I had no idea. So, I would like to get this fixed, and I think the city bears some responsibility to helping me with, you know, the cost of it. Because back in the day, it should have been hooked up, in my opinion. I am willing to, you know, have... I'm going to use... I'm going to use my... all my savings to get this done. Plus, I'm willing to have some work done, you know, the work cost put on my taxes. You know, I forget the word, but, you know, but I think I'm hoping the city can help me out in some way of either lowering the cost, you know, shouldering some of the burden, financial burden. And I do have, right now, a grant of $6,000 to the county, but that runs out. I can only hold on to the money until August 31st. At that point, it's released for other people to use. You know, so it's... that's limited in time. I only have access to that money until August 31st, which is the busy season for digging holes, apparently. So, it's hard to get this scheduled on this short notice. But, so that's the problem I have is I... it's a modest little house, and I've been in Shakopee for 26 years, and I'm hoping... I was banking on getting some money out of this house to help my retirement. Well, now that's in jeopardy. Well, more than jeopardy, it's not going to happen. I need to get this fixed before I can either rent or sell the house, whenever that may be. So, I'm hoping I can get some direction from the council.
Sure. Have you notified city staff about this prior to this meeting, no?
Yes. Bruce has helped me out considerably. The city has actually been very helpful. They've dug several holes in my backyard and in the alley, because the city couldn't believe I wasn't hooked up. So, they're digging all over the place looking for pipes, and you know, there's no pipe between 2nd and 3rd on Somerville. There's one on Spencer, which is down the alley. You know, it's blocked. I'm on one end of the alley, Spencer's on the other end. So, that's the proposed route. Go to, you know, and this does not include my house to the new pipe. That's on my... that's my responsibility. But, I need a pipe to hook up to. And right now, Dave Parrott, a contractor, has suggested, and Bruce has suggested, the best route is go down the alley. And that's a considerable distance. And that's probably the route we're going to take. Just... I need some help.
Well, we don't normally talk about items in depth about items that aren't on the agenda. We would see if we can... before we can decide even what we can do, if anything, to talk to staff and see it come back. Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, a couple of questions. How long have you lived at the property?
26 years.
Follow-up question. I have to assume, based on your comments, that the houses around you are not served either?
Oh, they're all served. My house is the only house facing Somerville. Yeah, Somerville, between 2nd and 3rd. Everybody else is, you know, connected on either 2nd or 3rd. There's a... across the alley from me is a structure that doesn't have sewer or water. It used to be a horse stable, and now it's someone's garage.
I've got one other case like this that was on this side upon 2nd, that we didn't have a pipe in the area, and it wouldn't have been cost-effective. And I think we allowed that to renew the septic system at the time. So, we'll have to have much more information, I guess.
Councilor Luce?
I'd just make a motion to bring it back in the next available slot, so we can have staff work on it, and we can talk about it.
Councilor Whiting?
Well, I would second that, but I, you know, this... and Mr. Hawes has talked to me about this probably about a year ago, and staff has worked with him. I just find it shocking that, you know, we've let some of these houses... I didn't realize there was another one, but slipped through the cracks. And to me, you know, with infiltration and things like that, you don't... you don't want this kind of situation to happen. I guess we know why Glenda's garden is so beautiful now.
That's right.
To me, this is just a shock, and I think we need to take a look at this and consider all the options and possibly adding it to his assessment rule.
Let's hear from Mr. Loney.
Well, Mayor, members of council, we've had several meetings with Mr. Hawes here, starting last year with our public works crews, assisting him in locating where a pipe might be. He is connected to water, and for the life of us, we cannot figure out why sewer was never brought to his house. He does have a relatively small lot, so I don't believe an option of another septic system site is available, but you can check that out, see if that's a possibility. Running the sewer, we've done our own estimates, can be anywhere from $30,000 to $40,000. It's a small house, I think you would agree.
Yeah.
On a small lot off of Somerville. So, that's been a dilemma. We have done a survey. We've done a preliminary design. We've contacted contractors for Mr. Hawes. We've done a lot of staff time involved with this, and I think the dilemma is how much should the city, if any, pay? That might have to wrestle with the council. We can bring that information back. I think I have a technician working on this. He might have some estimates by the next council meeting. At least we'll have a better... more information on this. And I think the question for Darren, too, will be how much should the city really finance on something like this?
Councilor Luce?
I can answer Councilor Whiting's question on how this happens. We just had three businesses tonight that we gave water or liquor licenses to that aren't on city water. They should have been hooked up years ago. Knights Event Center and Dangerfields. They just have been let slide. I mean, they're supposed to have a three-year grace period. They're a long past three years. That's how this stuff happens.
Councilor Lehman?
I'd point out that back when past Councilor... former Councilor Clay was on the city council, the vote at the time was three to two. Councilor Clay and myself wanted to add our sewer credit policy to allow residential properties that were on septic systems to utilize the sewer credits that we accumulated to get on the system, and that was denied by the council on a 3-2 vote.
That might be an option.
I just have a general question. If here it is, this resident before us tonight, but there's been background conversations for quite some time. Why has this just not come before the council before?
He's been working with staff, as far as I'm concerned.
Right. There's been, you know, so many moving pieces, and the latest one is I just got engaged, so apparently I'm moving to St. Paul. And so, the house either will be... I can't, from what Bruce... maybe it wasn't Bruce, but someone told me I can't... I have to get it fixed before I sell the house, whether it's this year or 20 years from now. So, get it done now. Well, I can't.
Yeah. Councilor Luce?
Just want to get my bearings there. Are you on the south or the north side of the alley?
The south side.
South side, okay. Just want to make sure. I think part of the reason that that happened was that used to be an old gas station there, and that was connected to a house that...
House is 1895. 1895. I think the gas station was across the street where the library is now.
Okay. That may be. That lot that you're on and the lot next to you were all one lot back when I was a kid.
Right. Yeah, that's true.
And that's... the one house was hooked up to 4th Avenue. The extra lot on the corner was not.
Right.
That's how that happened.
When the lot split happened, they didn't run it to the next one. I'm curious where the first one gets it from, though.
We'll take it up with staff. We may see this back before us at another council meeting. Obviously, I feel like you would be notified and try to get more information on this to try to make some sort of decision. And thank you for bringing this issue forward, and I appreciate it.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you. This is an opportunity for a resident to come forward and speak on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record and sign in. Seeing none. Let's move ahead then to item number six, business removed from consent. And we will start with 4C2, and I believe Councilmember Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is for the Diversity Alliance International Festival. I do have some flyers, if you'd like to pass some of those out, to talk about. This is the... I believe it's the fifth annual event. It's a standalone event. This is something we've talked about on several occasions, and we've... and again, I've requested that this be brought forward to waive the fees. I think it's important that the city works with events like this that are, you know, in our community, that are kind of open for community celebrations. They're not supporting any fundraising attempt. I mean, they're fundraising to try and have this event. There's also an event in the fall. I think that would be the same respect, where I think we should have an opportunity to waive some of these fees to help this organization celebrate for our city. You know, the thing that strikes me is that we're trying to be an inviting city, and then, you know, this isn't a huge roadblock. It's $700 with $650 plus. There's another fee for the food trucks, I think. But, it just seems like something that we should, you know, be doing for celebrations for our city. And so, I'm bringing it forward and asking for the fees to be waived, and I guess leave it for comment.
Thank you. Other? Councilor Luce?
Yeah, last year, we denied their request, and in actuality, they came out pretty good on the deal, because they had companies step in and give them more money than they actually needed for the fees. So, I can't see where that would be a bad deal again.
Other comment? Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, I think this council's already made a decision that we're going to be consistent in how we charge fees across the board, fair and equitable for all. Doesn't mean I don't want Shakopee Diversity Alliance to be successful, so I will take my opportunity to put a sales pitch out there for the residents of Shakopee and the businesses of Shakopee to please support the Shakopee Diversity Alliance. Their website is shakpeediversityalliance.org, so please sign up and offer a donation and make them successful in your community.
Councilor Whiting?
Mr. Mayor, we have a couple of members of the Diversity Alliance here in the International Festival, if you have any questions. I guess I have a question, and Terry, do you want to... can you?
Ms. Hassan, if you'd step forward, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Terry Hassan, and I'm the vice chair of the Shakopee Diversity Alliance.
And I'm aware that the fundraising isn't going where we would hope it to be, but could you kind of elaborate on some of the fundraising and some of that, and some about the event?
Yes, we are doing fundraising, but currently, we are not at the level that we'd like to be. So, we thought it would be good to ask the council, once again, to be generous, to try to help us organize this event. Of course, we always hope businesses are going to come forward, but as of yet, we're not guaranteed. It's been a little bit slower this year, so I don't know. Other things are coming up for people to donate their time, but we always have the people that come, and they really enjoy it. So, people have told us from every year, as it gets bigger and bigger, that they do look to this event as their summer community event, especially with Derby Days no longer being available. So...
Thank you.
We have a full roster of entertainment.
Other questions? Did you have a comment, Ms. Mokel?
I have a comment, just from the standpoint of what we talked about last year after the vote on this same issue. We talked about creating maybe a policy for waiving of nonprofits, but that never really came forward to us. And I would like to, you know, maybe talk about that again, is that we create some type of policy for nonprofits and how we would use those fees and what kind of actions that we would, you know, ask from them. And that way, when they would come forward and ask for these waivers, they'd know exactly what we were looking for.
Well, I think, you know, I think we've been here before. We have some council members that are very passionate about it. We have another organization that I believe was on consent that wasn't asking for any waiver of fees, you know, treating everybody fair and equally and the same in this situation. I don't think that... the fees are a barrier to any organization. Obviously, the budget on these events are $10,000 or greater, you know, a couple hundred dollars for the fees. So, I'd like to stick... I'm a policy person, and I would like to stick with the policy that we have. I do understand the connection and the passion of the organization. Last year, I donated toward the organization, went to their event, great event, as are all of them, whether they're nonprofit or for profit. But, I just want to have a situation where we're not in a position where we're choosing organizations over the other.
Right.
And then if we waive one and waive them all, well, some of our properties are designed to collect a small fee for the impact and the service and use of that facility. But, I like fair and equal, and that doesn't mean I don't support the organization. Councilor Whiting?
Well, we'll try this again. I'll move to direct staff to bring forth a policy for events that are in public, public celebration events that aren't raising money for their own cause, that celebrate Shakopee, and hopefully that can be moved and brought forward within the next couple of months.
Hang on a second.
Okay, a motion to... I guess what we have before us is the packet item.
Well, we'll start with that one.
So, let's just wait. Yes, state your name and address.
Um, yes, we are doing fundraising, but, um, currently we are not at the level that we'd like to be. So we thought it would be good to ask the council, once again, to be generous, to try to help us organize this event. Um, of course, we always hope businesses are gonna come forward, but, um, as of yet, we're, we're not guaranteed. It's been a little bit slower this year, so I don't know other things are coming up for people to donate their time. But we always have the people that come and they really enjoy it. So people have told us from every year as it gets bigger and bigger that, um, they do look to this event as their summer community event, especially with Derby Days no longer being available. So-
Thank you.
We have a full roster of entertainment.
Other questions? If not, did you have a comment, Ms. Mokel?
I, I have a comment just from the standpoint of what we, we talked about last year after the vote on, on this same issue. We talked about creating maybe a policy for waiving of nonprofits, but that never really came forward to us. And I, I would like to, you know, maybe talk about that again, is that we create some type of policy for nonprofits and how we would use those fees and, um, and what kind of, um, actions that we would, you know, ask from them. And that way, when they would come forward and ask for these waivers, they'd know exactly what we were looking for.
Well, I think, uh, you know, I think we've been here before. Uh, we have some council members that are very passionate about it. We have another organization that I believe was on consent that wasn't asking for any waiver of fees. You know, treating everybody fair and equally and the same in this situation. I don't think that the fees are a barrier to any organization. Obviously, the budget on these events are ten thousand dollars or greater. You know, a couple hundred dollars for the fees. So, um, I'd like to stick, I'm a policy person and I would like to stick with the policy that we have. I do understand the connection and the passion of, of the organization. Last year I donated toward the organization, um, went to their event, great event. Um, as, as are all of them, whether they're nonprofit or for profit. But I, I just want to have a situation where we're not in a position where we're choosing organizations over the other. And then if we waive one and waive them all, well, some of our properties, um, are, are designed to collect a small fee for the impact and the service and use of that facility. But I, I like fair and equal and, uh, and that doesn't mean I don't support the organization. Counselor Whiting?
Well, we'll try this again. I'll, I'll, uh, move to direct staff to bring forth a policy for, uh, events that are in public, public celebration events that aren't raising money for their own cause, uh, that celebrate Shakopee. And, uh, how hopefully that can be moved and brought forward within the next couple of months.
And I'll second.
Okay, a motion to, I guess what we have before us is the, the packet item.
Well, we'll start with that one.
So let's just wait and, yes, state your name and address for the record.
Judy Tice and I'm with, uh, Diversity Alliance in Shakopee too.
Can you speak up a little louder?
Okay, sorry. Um, I'd like to just make one comment. Um, I've been going to some of the Diversity Alliance meetings and, um, the, um, police chief made an especially strong impact with me, um, at one of our last get-togethers. And I think that in the current times right now, with the divisiveness that's been going around in the whole, you know, the whole country, that this is an especially important time to bring all of the diverse communities together. And give the, our police department a chance to meet all the different groups and make an impact that, um, both the sheriff's department and the police department have booths at this organization. And I think that we should make a point, I mean, that's what the whole point of the Diversity Alliance is, is to bring our society together in a community atmosphere of celebration and community. And that's what we need in order to give, if this gives our, uh, you know, our police and our community people of Shakopee a chance to meet everybody when there isn't an emergency. So that's why I think that the fees should be waived is because it's making, it's giving us as strong an arm as possible when we're interacting with the community.
You, you see money as a barrier for people coming together?
I would see it as a barrier for us trying to do the, as good a job as we can in the Diversity Alliance. I'm just part of the International Festival this year.
Thank you. Okay. So, um, where are we at?
Oh, we have a motion on the floor and a second.
That was for the, oh, okay, Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, the motion that's on the floor right now is to, what's the motion?
Move to direct staff to come back with a policy for, uh, waiving fees on events in, that are, community celebrations.
So basically, Mayor, it's a policy to direct staff to pick and choose who gets paid fees and who doesn't. And there goes their equality right out the window. So I would not be in favor of that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second on the table?
Yeah, I seconded it.
Huh?
Okay.
That is the motion then?
That, that is the motion.
Okay, just want to be clear.
Further discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oop. I, I meant to vote no. I apologize. I apologize. All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye. The motion fails for, to direct staff for that policy. Counselor Whiting?
I'll make a motion to authorize staff to, uh, waive fees for the Shakopee Diversity Alliance International Festival.
And I'll second.
And I have a motion and a second. And Counselor Lehman?
Is that the, uh, as, as submitted?
Correct.
All right.
Not as submitted, you mean waive fees?
To waive fees, not as submitted, no, not as, not as submitted, no. Because it's, uh, the staff recommends denial of this, but, uh, I would move that we waive the fees.
Okay. Further discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Aye.
Aye, motion fails three to two. All right. Thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
I'll make a motion there.
Counselor, uh, Lehman?
I'll make a motion for the, uh, in-kind contributions of Shakopee Diversity Alliance Fifth Annual International Festival, uh, with the understanding that they will be paying the required park rental and special permit fees totaling six fifty plus a hundred returnable deposit.
Okay, motion on the table?
Second.
Second by Counselor, um, question, Counselor Lehman?
Our city administrator is looking at me with a question?
No, sir.
Okay. So it's consistent with the memo, uh-
Right, with the policy.
Yep.
I just, you know, I'm a fan of the Shakopee SDA. They've done well. You mentioned that they're on their, uh, fifth, uh, festival. So, I think that our board for all organizations coming before us, um, nonprofit or profit, our policy kind of stands as it is. Would we see this request again next year?
Maybe. Maybe this fall.
That's fine. Uh, motion on the table and a second, further discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Aye.
Opposed.
Okay, motion passes three to two. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, just a comment. I guess I wouldn't be opposed to staff looking at a different fee structure for nonprofits located in Shakopee, but it wouldn't be a waiving of the fees, it wouldn't be what I would be looking for. I would be looking for some kind of a difference, you know, fee structure. But that's just a comment. It's not a direction.
All right. Let's move ahead then to four D five, uh, policy statement supporting local decision-making authority. Counselor Lehman, I believe you pulled this?
I did. I guess I'll start off by pointing out that the fact that the city council exists is by state statute, which the state legislator designed for us. So apparently they had some concerns that they wanted to have a local control or what they, they want to have created city councils and statute. Um, with that being said, I was reading this document and it's pretty generic until it gets to more than two dozen bills that restrict local decision-making that were introduced in twenty-seven to date. I'd like to see the two dozen for starters. And then, it talks about health, safety, and welfare regulations best serving local constituents. Our welfare is through Scott County, State of Minnesota, and the federal government. I'm not sure adding a fourth layer of welfare is a good idea.
I don't think it means that type of welfare.
Well-
The county is also a local authority.
They're constitutional, we're not. We're created by statute. So I, I guess I, I need a little bit more information because what's this doing is, is it's extremely broad. And there's a lot of state statutes and state laws that dictate to us. And the rationale for that is because you could have a local, well, you could have a lot of local city councils. Let's say we have carte blanche, local control. Shakopee could say you don't have to wear a seatbelt. Savage could say, we decide that you want to just wear a seatbelt. Bernsburg could say you don't have to and you'd be putting it on, taking it off, put it on, taking it off. There's no uniformity across the state, which is not a good thing in some cases. So-
But state law supersedes that.
Not if they relinquish and turn it to local control. So what you're asking here is-
That's not what that's saying.
Well, I guess I don't understand what it's asking for.
Okay.
Well, then I, I, no offense, but-
Counselor Mokel?
But no offense, but I, have you not been paying attention during this whole season of, of the legislature? I mean, there's plenty of things that they've been trying to take local control away from.
Examples?
And, and that's where I'm, I, for me, it's just making sure that they are aware that we still want to maintain control over some of these issues.
Examples?
Well, I can give you plenty of, the, the main one, and which was vetoed by the governor, was for the fifteen dollar an hour wage in, in Minneapolis. There was also one, and I don't recall the city, but it was on plastic bags. So they didn't want to have plastic bags in the city being used because it was creating trash. It was clogging up the sewers. Another example of health and welfare, like you were respecting, is, uh, City of Savage, right next door. They have different laws as far as, uh, smoking and, um, the, uh, the type of- E-cigs, yeah, you can't smoke an E-cig in any of their indoors in any place in Savage. And you have to smoke twenty, I think it's in Savage, twenty-five feet away from any door, uh, to any building, any public building. So there are different decisions that each city can make at their own level that may be different from other places. And what's nice about, uh, local control is it's a microcosm of, of how things get started. So if we make a decision at, at a local level, maybe we choose to do the fifteen dollar an hour wage, just for an example. And all our restaurants start failing and, you know, we're elected officials, so we take the heat for that. You know, we get unelected or, or either things work or they don't. And you find out how those little new laws work at a local level before they go to a, a broader level. By taking away the control that we as an elected body have, uh, that's circumventing our authority and, and, and not giving us the chance. I mean, uh, there's real consequences and, and, you know, there's earned sick leave laws that are coming up, which is health and welfare, uh, in different cities. And what, what you're basically saying is that, uh, corporations are, are more priorities than your citizens. And in many of these cases, why should the corporate priorities interfere with local control? And state laws, uh, you know, can set minimum standards for local governments, but we can build on and improve them.
Well, and there's times that, you know, we don't have local control and we kind of raise an ire over that.
Exactly.
And that's exactly how the process is designed to work. We're supposed to take issues that we don't have control over, that we think we should have control over, and we should be going to our state legislators and our senators and our governors and saying, and making our case and telling them why. The, the role for the state to play, all of them elected across the state, is to see how does this work in the broader picture of things for the whole state? Otherwise, what you create is, is you create pockets against each other where the, the general citizenry doesn't know what the rules are from one community to the next on things that are just brought across the state. If you, you know, so, you know, I'm all for taking individual items and taking a look at them, but I think a blanket approach is just a wrong approach.
Okay. Do we want to, uh, with all due consideration, um, table this and talk about it more or? I think this, uh, actual verbiage of this, for the most part, came right out of the League of Minnesota City.
Exactly.
So-
Yeah, I don't have a whole lot of-
I'll try, I'll, I'll try to make a motion to adopt a resolution seventy-eight ninety-five, which establishes the city council's policy of support. It's only a policy of support of local decision-making authority and opposing legislation limiting the ability of local elected officials to respond to the needs of their businesses and constituents.
And I'll second.
I, I have a motion, a second. Trying to read the discussion point here and on the, on the league, on the league's website and, and a little more information here. But the intent of this resolution is to show support throughout the state, including Shakopee, to make local decisions without undue, undue influence from the state. But a law is a law, and I get that. Counselor Lehman?
I'm telling you, without, without the state legislator creating the ability for councils to exist, they, we wouldn't be here. So you're, you know, careful what you wish for, put you out of business and now, and somebody else run it, so.
Well, that's, that's what we're trying to avoid, but state law circumcedes anything at a local level.
I think you missed what I-
And so federal law would supersede that.
You missed what I just said. They could pass a state statute that says cities no longer have to have city councils.
Well, they could, but that's not what's in front of us.
So, and I, and as far as the business aspect of it, needs of their, of businesses, businesses are supposed to function on the free market. Uh, you know, we sit here and, and give a bunch of our tax, struggling taxpayers' money away to these very lucrative businesses for, as tax incentives and, and, uh-
Which are not giving up control to the businesses.
We're doing, we're doing that under what's allowed in state statute.
Right.
And you're saying, get the state statute out of the way, let us just decide how we can, you know, well, case in point, you can't use, uh, tax abatement or TIF or take property for, for financial gain. Let's get rid of that, now we can just take somebody's property by force and make it financial gain.
Call the question.
Okay. Uh, call, call the question, all in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes three to two. Thank you. Moving ahead then to seven A one. Counselor Member Lehman?
Yeah, a question on this about the alley. I thought we already approved the alley.
This was for the, uh, my call?
Mayor and council, the alley has to be bid, publicly bid. So you have approved the assessment, but you have not approved any bids.
Got it. All right. And these bids are gonna be three separate bids?
Mayor and council member, we have, we'll get a separate bid for the alley because that's a separate item. The R, RJM, who's our construction manager, is gonna bid out the rest of the items. What you're seeing are actually where the money's coming from. But if we could get one contractor to do everything, that would be wonderful, but I doubt that'll happen in the current market.
I was just looking at the city project numbers. There's three separate project numbers for, ones for the downtown, ones for the Lewis Street Alley, and ones for the parking lot. So I was wondering if they're bidding them separately or?
Mayor and council member, they're bidding them together. Those are strictly from our financial accounting standpoint.
And then the bids come back?
Mayor and council, yes, bids will come back to you, um, depending on how many come in either the fifth or the eighteenth of July.
Okay.
Other questions on this? Counselor, uh, Lewis?
I just think we've waited way too long to get these out to forbid. I think we're gonna take a real hit this late in the season. We should add these out for bid months ago.
Counselor Mokel?
I'll make a motion authorizing staff to advertise for bids for the downtown improvements, including Lewis Street Alley and Lewis Street Parking Lot.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Whiting. Further discussion? Counselor Lehman?
I'm, I'm not opposed to getting the bids, I just wanted to be clear on a couple of points and then, uh, we'll see where the bids go. Maybe we'll be surprised and they'll come in like a third of what we anticipated.
There you go.
Hey, there's optimism.
I have a motion on the table and a second, further discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you very much. Moving ahead then to, uh, seventy-two, final plat from Lenar Holmes. And Mr. Saboda will present. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Lenar Holmes, uh, has made, uh, sorry, having trouble with the cursor here. Made application for a final plat of Ridge Creek First Edition, which is on the east side, east side of Shakopee, off of Eagle Creek Boulevard, uh, just south of County Road twenty-one. Uh, so here's the location. Uh, this is County Road twenty-one on the north side. This is Pike Lake Road on the west, Eagle Creek Boulevard on the south. And this is Foothill Trail here in Riverside Bluffs. So Ridge Creek First Edition is the, they're looking at the southern part of the preliminary plat of Ridge Creek that you saw about three months ago. And it would be directly in between Ridgeview Estates and Riverside Bluffs. So the proposal is for forty-four single-family lots, zoned R one B. Uh, as part of this, there'd be the extension of Crossings Boulevard on the north side. Uh, but that area would not be developed yet with, uh, single-family homes at this time. Uh, it would also be an extension of the trail along Eagle Creek Boulevard, the dedication of Outlet A and B to the city, which I'll be showing you the full plat here in a second. Uh, the proposed design that they've submitted conforms with the preliminary plat and the PUD that council approved. So this is the area on the south side is Eagle Creek Boulevard here. So it would involve the extension of Oak Ridge Trail between Ridgeview Estates and Riverside Bluffs. So it'd be one cul-de-sac, the extension of Oak Ridge Trail, and Eagle Ridge Loop. So this is a total of forty-four single-family lots. So, this is the northern part of the plat, uh, showing Crossings Boulevard, which is the right-of-way. Outlet C would be developed into future home sites at a later date. Outlet B and Outlet A are open space that would be dedicated to the city. Uh, they're wetland and open space areas. So just to the south here, you can see this is the bluff line and those are the lots on the northern part of the, of the final plat. Uh, overall, staff recommends that the city council approve, uh, the final plat of Ridge Creek First Edition. Uh, with an addition to the approval for a second model home site. The report, uh, the report only mentions one model home site, but, uh, after speaking with the developer, they would like to have a second model home site. Staff supports that request, uh, provided that the streets are, the street that the model home is on would be installed, um, which, uh, this is something that's been done in the past, but staff recommends approval of the requirement.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Counselor Lehman?
Outlet A and Outlet B say drainage, utility easement, and wetland? Correct?
Uh, Mayor Mars, Counselor Lehman, that's correct.
So it's not, uh, we're not taking, we're not getting this property in exchange for park dedication?
Uh, Mayor Mars, Counselor Lehman, that's correct. They would be paying park dedication fees as well, uh, for the, for the entire subdivision. These are, this is wetland, uh, open space. And, uh, that would be something that the city would be looking at potentially developing at a later date with just trails, but it wouldn't be typical park development.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Member Lewis?
So A and B are gonna be in amenity form, but they're not gonna pay taxes on it?
What's a requirement for drainage?
Right.
Uh, Mayor Mars, Counselor Lewis, that's- Mayor Mars, Counselor Lewis, that's correct. There would not be taxes paid on it. It would actually be owned by the city.
For a public benefit in our park system.
Correct. Yes.
Right.
In our drainage system.
And drainage was part of it.
Prior like all the channel runs through Outlot A.
All works out. There's a great opportunity here to do almost everything and get some drainage for the, for the ditch, amenity for, some would say this neighborhood, but.
Anybody who walks a trail, I guess.
Get the trail, pretty cool stuff.
Right.
And good holding areas.
Right. I have a question. When their preliminary plat was before us, we were talking about matching some grading and, and actually fixing some grading on adjacent sites. To how did that end up?
Mayor Mars, members of the council, Lenar and the neighboring homeowners in Riverside Bluffs weren't able to come to an agreement for the work to be completed. So that's not something that, that has been done. The site, if you've been out in the area, you'll notice that the trees have been cleared and grading has begun, but that was not something that was, an agreement was able to be reached.
It was a opportunity, right, for all parties?
Correct.
Okay, I get that. Counselor Lewis?
The two outlots are gonna somewhat be developed for, with a boardwalk and such, correct? That's the plan?
Mayor Mars, Counselor Lewis, there isn't a final plan at this time, but it's, it's intended that the park dedication would be from, collected from this development would be programmed for the development of those.
That was my final question. Thank you.
Other questions of staff? Counselor Lehman?
When we, the point that Mayor Mars brought up about the property neighboring and making the.
Grade adjustment.
Grade adjustment. If that's not done, what are we gonna do to make sure one or the other doesn't impact each other?
Mayor Mars, Counselor Lehman, there's storm, there's storm sewer that would be run, that's gonna be run on the lot lines.
Okay.
Between this, between the subdivision.
The other one?
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions of staff? If not, Kyle, thank you very much. Would the opkin and/or their representative like come forward and make comment on their final plat application? Welcome. State your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Paul Tabone. I'm an entitlement manager with Lenar. Address is one-six-three-oh-five Thirty-Sixth Avenue North, Suite six-hundred, Plymouth, Minnesota. Don't have a whole lot to add to staff's presentation. I want to thank the city for the support moving forward. Have worked extensively with planning staff and Bruce as well, and we're excited. We have begun grading on the site, and with the approval this evening, we're working with staff to finalize the plans and the developers' agreement, so that we can get going on utilities and be delivering a model home into the fall and the winter, ready for spring.
I think we're excited as a community. It's been a missing link in our community for a long time, and Lenar coming forward with a plan that, obviously, the, this wetland opportunity is great and appreciate that, so, thank you. As far as, those are my questions. Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, the planner stated that there's gonna be a drainage pipe running between those two properties that you were unable to agree upon grading. What are we looking at? Is there a large difference in, in grade levels, or is it fair, basically gonna be a swale?
As of right now, the, the difference ranges anywhere from eight to twelve feet of fall from the site to the, from our site to the homes, existing homes to the east. But we have accommodated for the storm water on our site. So it would be a storm drain and a couple of catch basins in the backyards that would ultimately drain to the storm drainage ponds that are shown on the northern side of the first edition and of the southern side of future editions. So we are accommodating for storm water.
Okay, I caught eight to twelve. Was that inches or feet?
Feet.
That's a great.
This is something that was graded long before Lenar was in the picture.
No, I just.
So we tried our best to work it out, but weren't able to, to make it work.
Appreciate you doing that.
We appreciate your effort and the, and the opportunity to accommodate and improve things. Thank you for that effort.
Thank you.
Other, Counselor Lehman?
I'll offer resolution seventy-eight ninety-seven, a resolution approving the final plat of Ridge Creek First Edition.
Second.
I have a motion, a second by Counselor Lewis. Questions, comment? Counselor Lehman?
The, what do they call them? Gen something with the?
Gen next.
Next gen.
Next gen?
Next-gen homes.
Yeah, it's backwards, so. It would be interesting to see one of them when they're, when it's complete. I don't know if you're gonna do a show home of one of them or not, but it would be interesting to see.
They do have them on their website.
Oh, they do?
We do have them on our website, and if you're interested in touring one, I can figure out where the, I know, I know we do have models of them. I can't think of any off the top of my head, but we have models built that you could walk through.
All right.
And they are on our website if you want to take a closer look as well.
I'll do that. Thank you.
Further discussion, discussion? Motion on the table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Moving ahead to seven B one then, reclassification of city engineer, Public Works, and Ms. Gabbard will present. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm here tonight asking for motion to approve the reclassification of the city's city engineer and public works director position. We do have a potential candidate that Nate will be, sorry, Nate will be offering as another agenda item, but for tonight's motion, we're asking to reclassify it as a grade twelve.
Questions of staff?
Questions of staff? Counselor Lewis? What's your justification for reclassification?
Actually, looking at comparison cities is the most compelling data that we can provide. Out of our ten comparison cities, there are only two other cities in our comparisons that have the dual position of city engineer and public works director at this point. The remaining eight of those comparable cities have both positions and two people in both of those positions. So we're regrading it to be comparable to our comparable cities.
Other questions? Counselor Whiting?
I'll make a motion to approve the reclassification of the city engineer, public works director position from a grade eleven to a grade twelve.
One second.
I have a second by Counselor Mokel. Further discussion?
Bring it up on the next topic, I guess.
Further discussion? Thank you for the analysis.
You're welcome.
Pretty detailed here. Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, it was just very helpful for, even for staff to look at the data, because the data really is compelling.
And the, yeah. Further discussion, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one with Counselor Lewis. Up next then, the seven C one, employment of the city engineer and director of public works, and Mr. Burkett will present.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'd like to ask the council to authorize the hiring of Steve Lilihog as the next city engineer and director of public works at step A of grade twelve of the city's 2017 non-union pay plan contingent upon the successful completion of a pre-employment physical drug test subject to a one-year probationary period. Mr. Lilihog was clearly the top candidate amongst all of the interview panel. He's one of those unique people who has the experience of being both a city engineer and a public works director. And while nobody will ever replace the man sitting to my left here, he is probably the closest that we will possibly be able to come. The breed of people who are both the engineer and public works director are very unique, and we are very lucky to have this opportunity. So I'm glad to recommend Mr. Lilihog as the next public works director for the city of Shakopee.
Thank you. Counselor Whiting?
Mr. Burkett, it looks like he worked in Minnetoka. Did you get a chance to work, work with him?
Counselor Whiting, I didn't, but.
Oh, Darren was in Minnetoka, that's right. And he's from the Army. He's not from North Dakota State, though, Bruce. I'm sorry.
It's a strike.
That was a strike against him, but he looks like he's got quite an impressive background.
Other comments, questions of staff? Counselor Lehman?
My understanding is we're offering him about $2,000 more than what he's currently making, and he's currently working in Brooklyn Park and living in, in, close by here. So, you know, I gotta ask myself, what, what is that benefit worth to not have to drive so far every day to and from? You know, that's gotta be, you know, at least an hour or more in rush hour traffic.
Yeah.
And, you know, if it's hour and a half up, hour and a half back, three hours, and now it's a hop, skip, and a jump, there's gotta be a, a benefit to this individual for that, and was that discussed in this process?
I, I would just say, if there's a benefit, you know, you can't, you can't put a dollar amount on that. I think for a person's life and their family, I think that's a great benefit. But, I mean, it's drive time. You get paid for drive? Maybe you do. I don't get paid to drive.
You're asking the reverse question, though.
I am asking the reverse question, because, you know, I'll tell you, when I was working up in the cities, the, the drive time was less than desirable, and I had to bite my tongue there for a word, because I was gonna say something much, much worse. And it's, it's worth taking a lower wage to be those.
We were gonna move this kind of talent, though, for that.
That's, I think, the other side of the equation. I will, Counselor Lehman, I drive that drive every single day. Fifty minutes one way. Twice a day. At six in the morning and at three-thirty in the afternoon. And you're correct. But then I, I looked hard at the caliber of the individual that we're getting and, you know.
I'm not asking that. I asked specifically if that was, if this item, if my topic was discussed.
Well, you know, we did, we talked about it a little bit, and I mean, he obviously made us aware that it was a closer drive for him, and we, we did speak about that. I think when it, for me, when, whenever you go into a negotiation like this, it's, it's more than just that. I think for, just looking at this position and looking at the caliber and the interviews and what's out there, because we had some really good interviews. But I think the reality was, if we didn't get Mr. Lilihog in, we'd be paying for two people. And that was the reality. And so it kinda is that weighing of, is it worth it to, to take, to give what he asks? Yes, it is. So those are those things that you have to ask.
All right. Further discussion or motion?
One last question. If, if we don't hire this individual, we go back out and redo the process? Is that what you're telling me? And what's the cost of that? Is it more than the 2,000 difference?
Oh, yeah.
All right. I don't, I'm not gonna buck the whole system for two grand, but I wanted, you know, these questions should be discussed about.
Those are good questions. Counselor Whiting?
I'll make a motion to authorize staff to hire Steve Lilihog as the city engineer and director of public works at step A of grade twelve of the city's 2017 non-union pay plan contingent upon a successful completion of a pre-employment physical drug test and subject to one-year probationary period.
Counselor Mokel, a second on that. Motion is made. Further discussion? Counselor Lehman?
Just to be clear, this is gonna have both sides of the position, and we're not coming back to fill the other one.
Right.
And I'll thank Ms. Mokel for sitting in on those interviews and appreciate the input.
Thank you.
Further discussion, discussion, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
No, 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 no.
Oh?
Abstain.
I apologize. Counselor.
I can't meet the person. I can't vote on them.
Okay.
You know, you gotta have a face-to-face for at least five minutes.
Well, that's fine. We had a subcommittee that made a recommendation. That's fine. So four, four and one abstain. Thank you. Moving ahead to eight A, liaison administration. Our city administrator is not in attendance. Does our assistant city administrator have anything to report on City Hall?
I do have a couple of points, Mr. Mayor. The first is that I know that we reported to you a while back that we were gonna be having, we weren't gonna be televising this meeting, but that was because we presumed that our contractor for moving all of this stuff had some constraints that it turned out they were able to be flexible with. So we're gonna try and keep the, the equipment in here for as long as possible, keep televising the meetings, not disrupt operations. I can't say for sure if that's gonna be before the next council meeting or after, but we're gonna do our best just to, to keep things as smooth as possible. I wanted to point out that we've done some things regarding to our internal process on the agendas and preparation, and we're trying to be more consistent in the way that we're writing things down for you and attaching documents and things like that, and trying to set it up so that if you want to make a motion to move the recommendation of staff, you can simply read the section that says policy action requested. You can say, I moved to, and then read that section. This is all intended to make it more streamlined and consistent for the council members, so that you know exactly where to go for, for information when it's up on the agenda. I noticed that a couple of you were doing that already today, and that's really great. The next thing is that back in about February, I believe Mr. Reynolds notified you that we had been called, that we had been designated as a potentially responsible party related to the freeway landfill in Burnsville. That was actually two potentials, potential superfund sites that we might have been responsible for. But during this last legislative session, they actually passed legislation that effectively absolves the city of liability related to those two sites. What it really does is it gives the MPCA the authority to force the owner of that facility into the state's closed landfill program. And if they choose not to go into that closed landfill program and can come up with that agreement, then if it does become a superfund site, the state takes the responsibility for those expenses, but for the expenses of the owner-operator themselves.
Counselor Lehman?
Let me just correct a statement that he just made. We're not responsible for that landfill. We just happen to be a very minority user.
We were unfortunate to be on the list.
Right.
And, you know.
Well, hopefully that stands as a win for all the communities, our users, and that's been in contentious discussion for many years, and maybe we're getting closer to a positive action moving forward to clean it up. Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, as far as the documentation goes here, we used to have consent items marked consent on top, and Counselor Lehman's been asking for this forever. When might we see this?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Lewis, are you asking on the top of each of those items?
Right. It used to be marked consent, so it was easier to follow.
Rubber stamp. Okay. We can ask about that as far as the software goes, and I'll work with Mr. Reynolds to see what the history on that is.
This new software is new, just in the, less than a year, I think, six to eight months, and they're trying to tweak it. Remember the first ones?
Change is hard.
Real small.
Let's hit a positive. They've got the item numbers.
Are lining up.
Baby steps in the right direction.
More?
If I may, just one last quick point related to that EPA superfund site. The folks over in Burnsville did a lot of heavy lifting on that. So if you know any of them or know their city manager at all, it would be nice to say thank you, because they really did a lot of work to make this happen and, and protect the citizens of Shakopee from having to pay for something that they really had very little, if anything, to do with.
So the state preempted our local control and took care of the issue for us? Shame on them.
Well, that was coming.
Thank you, Mr. Burkett, for that update on those items. Counselor Mokel?
I had one meeting. It was for the SDA. We had our board meeting on five-twenty-five of 2017, and nothing really to report yet. We have our, other than our diversity festival that's coming up, and obviously, we've talked about that tonight, and it should be a great night, so please come.
Thank you, Counselor Whiting.
Thank you. On the eighteenth, we had the Community Center Input Committee and learned that, you know, some of these dates might be tentative because it is construction, but we know the fitness center is open at the community center, and if you haven't checked that out, please do so. It's quite amazing, and, and the members are very happy with the new equipment. I think the pool was scheduled around June thirtieth. The playground installation, middle of June here, they're working on that right now. I'm not sure when the teen center's gonna be done, but that's on the list, so that's some positive news, and people are very excited, and I actually heard there's people leaving lifetime to come to our community center. So on the twenty-third, attended the ribbon cunning and presented the proclamation for Fifth Avenue fines, and that's on First Avenue, in case, in case you got confused by that, but that's in the old, the old Argus Building where the bait shop was. On the twenty-fourth, MVTA meeting. The Cedar Grove online station, as it was opened on May twentieth, they presented their annual report, which I have one copy of. It's kinda draft form, but they have average boarding of 10,000 riders, average fare box recovery is 23 percent. So I thought Mr. Lehman might like to hear that one.
Seventy-five?
Seven, over, yeah, so that needs to be worked on.
Seventy-seven percent subsidized.
Average subsidy per passenger is $7.13. Eighty-nine percent ridership, most of, eighty-nine Eighty-nine percent ridership, uh, most of, eighty-nine percent of the ridership is for downtown service. So, um, that's how you can kinda maybe get out of traffic on your way to work.
Yeah, the, the buses with the expresses, they leave town and they're jam-packed full and then the, the empty trip comes back.
You can read the paper, yeah, you know.
I'd like that.
Uh, and I had the opportunity to, uh, be part of the Lions softball tournament that was very successful on a beautiful weekend, uh, this last weekend. And, uh, like we talked about, the International Festival is finalizing their details. That's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor.
I got a question on the Lions softball. I noticed a lot of golf carts going back and forth across, um, Marystown Road there. And I'm just wondering if those were all licensed drivers or if we're just using, looked pretty young to me.
I'm not sure on that.
There was a lot of crossings and, you know, that's a busy road, so.
With the construction of the new field, uh, at Topa Park, it took away a lot of the parking. And so a lot of the parking was done at Lions Park and I think they were shuttling mostly workers and I don't know about the drivers.
Oh, they had big signs up overflow parking.
Yeah, so, um, and I know maybe next year they could park in Hy-Vee's lot, but Hy-Vee might not appreciate that.
I'll bet on that.
Next year, the new, uh, uh, ball fields on the other side will be open.
Right, uh, but I don't know if there's any more opportunity for parking, but that may be something we wanna look at in the future because, uh, we packed them in and, and the Lions, Lions donate back all this money and it's sometimes between twenty and thirty thousand dollars that they make at this event.
I'm not trying to make trouble that way. I'm just, I'm just looking at safety for the city.
It is a big issue and, uh, and it was kind of a concern because some, it took some of the softball, uh, group as a surprise because they weren't aware of that ball field being installed.
I wouldn't be too quick on that parking either because we know eventually we're gonna end up putting a stoplight at that intersection. Which will make the crossing a lot more safer, so.
True, yeah.
Anything else? All right, thank you. Um, I attended a, just a meeting with the county, um, uh, county commissioner, county administrator with, uh, Mr. Reynolds on five seventeen. I went to Public Works Open House on the twenty-third, uh, attended the orderly annexation agreement with Councilman Lehman on the thirtieth and met with staff on, uh, five thirty-one. And, uh, that's, uh, that's my report there and I'll let, uh, uh, Councilman Lehman, uh, add to the orderly annexation.
I didn't have to go to the, uh, Public Works Open House. They were in, doing the alleys. So, I just looked out the door and said, "Hey, nice job." You know, both, the, the business and the home. Orderly annexation, uh, probably a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel. I think we've, might have been able to work through some of the more contagious issues. I'm gonna wait until staff has a chance to put it all together in a draft form and then get it out to all the council for a look over and, and, uh, I'm curious to see how it works out myself. Kinda looking at some unique things to deal with the payback, length of years on the payback, uh, which seems to be one of the stumbling blocks. Uh, you know, we're at, they started at like fifteen years or something like that and it was ridiculous, so. I, we ended up working through it and we'll see how this scale works out. And once it comes out and staff gets all their numbers together, we'll get it out to everybody, take a peek at it and we'll go from there. But, uh, if it all works out, it might be, you know, we might actually have an agreement we could, that we can recommend to this body for approval in the next sixty days or so.
Mr. Mayor, uh, the concern was we wanted to have it all staged and so that the timeline, which wasn't solid, but was flexible. But is that what was mostly in agreement?
You know, the, from our perspective and theirs, we, we all want it staged because it just doesn't make sense to do leapfrog development and it's not cost-effective to do it that way either from a services standpoint. One of the issues is, um, you've got areas on a, on a map, area A is out where D.R. Horton is starting now over two sixty-nine. And then you've got area B, which is on the other side of sixty-nine. So, you, you know, you kinda work as the utilities are east to west through A. One of the current requirements in the current annexation agreement is that, uh, fifty percent of the frontage you have to be up to in order to move into the next area of annexation. It's impossible for the city to ever reach that threshold going into area C, um, or even B because B's frontage outlines is much larger than A. So, A could never have fifty percent of what equals B. So, under the current language, we'd, we would never be able to move past A. So, these are some technical glitches that we started looking at and going, "Well, if this is the case, we'll never move past A." Um, so how do we get through that hurdle? So, that was one issue we had, had to look at reducing that fifty percent to like a twenty-five percent to where the frontage is all actually will work. So, that's long-term, that as A develops, three-quarters of it is developed or something, now you meet the threshold of twenty-five percent to move into B. One of the other issues was the length of time and payback. What was the third issue that we had? Sewer hookups was one of them. As we annexation, annex into areas where they have developments, uh, not new developments, but, uh, houses.
Septic, yeah.
Well, where they have actual, uh, what am I thinking? What's the word here? Where they have, uh, housing communities that are gonna stay there.
Small subdivisions.
Them subdivisions, if we ran a, a pipe next to it and they have a brand new septic system, let's say they just put one in five years ago, are we gonna force them to hook onto something where we can't prove a benefit in a court of, of benefit? So, how do we work through that issue? You know, and one of the things we worked through on that specific issue, issue was if, if the system is new and up to county standards, they can continue on that. But once it breaks down below county standards, they will have to come into our system. We're not gonna allow them to build another one. Same with the, yeah, the water, uh, same with the water issues too. I mean, we're not gonna, we also didn't, from our perspective, Mayor and I didn't wanna run a pipe from A all the way down to C.
Yeah, it makes no sense.
And, and to serve, you know, one person in need in the, in an existing subdivision, it's just not cost-effective. So, um, you know, I think I summed up most of the issues.
Appreciate all your, both of your work on that.
Well, it's, uh, we're bringing a draft, uh, forward here and, uh, we have worked on it. It's really about long-term planning and, you know, the township's looking at it from one angle, the city's looking at it from a different angle and trying to come together and get a, a base document, so. So, we'll do, um, anything else?
No.
All right, um, thank you. Uh, other business? Is there any other business before this board? Councilor Lewis?
Yeah, I'd like to see, uh, Public Works bring forward their mowing chart. I believe in, uh, past talks with, uh, Public Works Supervisor, there's a lot of, uh, private property that the city is mowing at our expense that should be done on the businesses' expenses. And, uh, the other, uh, one is the West End property that we own. The, uh, grass is getting about two feet high over there, looking pretty shaggy. I just was curious if it would be better or beneficial to find a farmer that would like some grass hay. And being that it's all cleaned up from last year when Public Works went in and took all the rocks and concrete and telephone poles and everything else out of there, um, it would be safe for someone to take the hay off of it. So, I think we could save ourselves some money with, uh, mowing costs. So, I would like to direct staff to bring that back at the earliest possible timeframe to a meeting so that we can go over that and maybe do some, some work on it because I think there's a lot of it that could be eliminated. We don't need to be paying for these businesses to mow their grass.
Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, I would go a step further. I'd like to see us take a look at, a lot of times we happen to be in the area doing our mowing that we are responsible for, whether it's a road right-of-way or something and we're doing the adjacent businesses because it's convenient because we're there. Maybe they should be, maybe we'll continue doing it, but they pay us for that and it actually becomes a revenue source stream.
But does that need to be at, at a council level or can we put this onto a staff level?
Well, we can, we can direct staff to take a look at this and I think that's what we're saying.
Do you have a consensus on that?
I think staff, I think this is a staff issue. If we wanted to look at it at a policy issue, then, then maybe that's something we should do.
But in order for staff to look at it, we have to bring it to the council. We'll see if it's something the council wants staff to look at.
So, would there be enough consensus for the council to direct staff to, uh, take a look at the Public Works mowing chart and get some information and see?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Lewis?
My understanding, they've been working on this for two years already and I think it maybe is about time that, uh, council steps in and maybe pushes this forward a little faster.
Well, we'd need information first.
Yeah, and I don't know that anybody's ever thought of, if we're there and it's convenient and we're doing our strip and we're doing somebody else's, that we give that person the opportunity to pay us for doing that. That way they, it's done. We know it's gonna get done. We're getting paid for our services and it's, it's a convenient service to the whoever's not doing it.
I just don't know.
Councilor Whiting?
I just, we have a new Public Works, uh, city engineer coming on. Um, I would like to, uh, maybe table this until they get their feet in to it a little while and, and be able to.
This would be at the mowing level, I would think.
I would hope so, but, uh, you know, I don't know that I wanna be looking at charts.
I don't know that I, this is something that we need to be doing on our level.
Councilor Lewis?
Another part of this is a lot of boulevards around town, especially on the major feeder lines, Seventeenth Avenue and a few of those over there. They're not getting mowed. These people have a fence and they don't see it, so the public has to look at it.
And we're not mowing that. We're not supposed to mow that.
Right, that's.
We're supposed to mow right up to the road. Well, maybe we can put out, that could be a communication thing and it, it, I look at that as well and, uh, I see people taking pride in their boulevards and others not and.
One right next to it not and.
Yeah, it's kinda soon.
It's, it's kind of a, uh, enforcement problem also.
I remember the last two weeks, it was pretty wet and hard to mow.
Well, um, yeah, okay. So, I don't know if we have, uh, uh, enough to move forward on the mowing chart and maybe we allow the time for the new, um, Public Works Director to get settled and, and, you know, maybe that's something he would delve into. And maybe in the, later, we would see more information on that.
Well, maybe I can ask a, a follow-up question. If, if the city's gonna mow other people's property and not get reimbursed for it, how do I get on that list?
Well, I was, my, Mr. Mayor, uh, my comment was, you know, if, if there are, those are supposed to be assessed. If we have to go in and mow, somehow that's supposed to be charged back to the homeowner on the taxes. But, uh, I think that would be a policy.
Those cities aren't homeowners. These are businesses that we're doing.
Well, either way, it's a policy decision that we need to enforce that assessment part of it.
Well, do you wanna see more information on that? That was.
That, you know, I don't wanna see, be looking at the charts and things like that, but, uh, I, I, I think we should look at the policy of, of how we're handling the assessments of mowing other people's lawns.
And until we know we're not paying, having them be assessed, then it becomes an issue for us. But if they're being assessed, I think that's.
Councilor Lewis?
Yeah, the, one of the main reasons is the property on the West End. I mean, we're trying to sell that. It doesn't even look saleable the way it is right now. I mean, even, if it was just mowed for the hay, it at least looked better. You know, and I don't know what the cost is for us to send Public Works out there, but it, it's gotta be fairly high to go out there and mow.
So, on the other item, the West End grass?
I like that idea, actually.
Would we direct staff to mow that?
Not mow it, uh, capitalize on it some way. I mean, there's no sense in cutting it down and throwing it away. It's a valuable resource.
Okay.
Bruce, Bruce, are we mowing private property and not getting reimbursed?
I think what, what I'm hearing is we're not going on private property. We might be mowing some boulevards that per city code, property owners are supposed to mow. Now, sometime we have public property and, you know, it's, we're talking about some of our main areas. We can not mow them. We can direct staff to do that. I'll have to look into it more, but I think some of the reasons is it's might be more convenient. But then the other case is you have to get code enforcement out there. Are you willing to do that? That's staff time too. So, I'll have to look into it more and see exactly, identify, get a map put together. I think we have an idea of what areas we don't, shouldn't be mowing per city code and which ones we should be and then we can give you that map.
Bruce?
We draw, uh, audience member from out in the hallway.
Did we wake you up?
No.
Chief Tate, welcome.
I was listening, that's why I came in.
Make a comment on this discussion.
Just real quickly, Mayor, members of council, uh, in the past few years, we've used a local mowing company, not city staff timing. They are busy with parks and, and different areas. We contract with a local, uh, mowing company. They come, we give them an address. Those people have already been cited for the violation and they are assessed. I wanna say on average, maybe like say the last five years, we've had to assess maybe three to five property. I mean, it's not much.
These are private property, right?
Yes.
Residents?
Yes.
So, if we get, if they get cited and then we mow them and then we bill them and then, you're saying in the end they pay for that?
Yes. The, sometimes where you would, would run into, uh, where that could be delayed is, is the vacant home, abandoned property, uh, that type of a thing, but.
Councilor Lehman?
We don't, we don't have someone mow their lawn if they haven't been cited either.
Yeah, and, and that's not what I'm talking about.
Right.
What I'm talking about is what Bruce was explaining to where we're there doing our section and it's just convenient just to do theirs too. Instead of not doing theirs too and waiting for it to become an issue and then making it a code enforcement issue, we should be proactively approaching them saying, "Hey, by the way, we're mowing your grass for you. Would you like us to continue, continue to do that? It takes us about a half hour. Here's our rate. We can do it because we're in the neighborhood and we'll make up some kind of an agreement with you and let them pay us for our time to do that."
Councilor Lewis?
For a little clarify.
Bruce first, him or me?
Well, I was gonna say, I think you need to get a handle on where, are we mowing that we shouldn't be mowing? And get a handle on that. I think we've been working on the map like Councilor Lewis has been saying. We can produce that map for you.
Does everybody wanna see more on this?
I don't.
Uh?
No.
Mr. Mayor, I would, I would like to see our city-owned property. If we can find a farmer that would take that, uh, that grass for, uh, field grass or whatever they need, uh, I think that's gonna help us move that property and, and clean it up and keep the rodents and things out of there and.
So, do we have consensus on that? Yeah. West End grass?
Yeah, that's fine. I'm, I'm, I'm not clear on one thing now.
To work on the West End hay grass?
I'm not clear on one thing.
Uh, no, on the, on the other part.
Right, right.
Councilor Lehman?
Okay, so we don't wanna see a map, so my question now is, do you want city staff mowing other people's grass for free? Yes or no?
No.
No.
Okay. There's your consensus.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Lewis?
I'd like to give an example. Um, south of Lowe's, there's a boulevard that we cut that I believe is part of our contract with the county, if I'm not mistaken. But we do cut part of Lowe's just because we're in the vicinity. And, go ahead.
And I, I think the area you're referring to, we might, we might be taking an extra swath along the trail in order to kinda keep, you know, the trail grass growing right up against the trail. I don't believe we're mowing a whole lot more than that.
No, it's a hillside there, but we've been taking care of it because nobody else has.
But you're making it sound like it's just an extra swath on the trail rather than copious amounts of.
Yeah, I think if you saw the, the map, you'd see it differently.
I'm not, I'm not here to argue about maintaining our trail.
Right. I don't wanna do that either.
You know, I'm not splitting hairs on.
You know, and, and I, we'll, we'll look into it, I think, and get back to you. We'll come up with some kind of report.
All right, um, thank you.
Other?
I have one other thing and other business.
Other business? Go ahead.
I need to have a meeting with, uh, um, Darren because there's a pay discrepancy on my pay stub and I just wanna get it cleared up, so I need the official okay to do that, so.
Okay, uh, and it's something in regard to your personal pay?
Can you stick around tonight and take care of that?
Okay, can do it tonight? Okay. Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Thank you very much.
I have one issue too.
Yep. Councilor Lewis or Lehman?
Bunch of citizens, you all might have saw it on Facebook, um, concerned about Seventeenth Avenue and Eagle Creek and eighty-three and light timing issues, um, county issue, I'm sure.
You think you passed, passed out along with the county?
I did, but really needs to come from staff. But somewhere along the line, I guess it was, possibly has something to do with the timing of the ramps on one sixty-nine?
Yeah, I saw that discussion about MinDOT. It's a county road.
I, I.
Uh, Bruce?
MinDOT controls all the signals from Seventeenth Avenue to Twelfth Avenue, including the ramps, so.
How do we get the message to them?
Let me know what the issue is and I'll get ahold of Kevin Schwartz, who's our signal timing guy.
The timing.
About that. I, so I can interject because this happened like last fall. I had, had, um, contacted Mr. Reynolds and, um, but I actually ended up running into Mr. Baird and he took care of it for me. So, um, I don't know if that helped or why that got done, but, um, I, when I talked to him, it seemed like that fixed it. But it was at that time, it was only letting, like the turn signals were only letting like two cars through.
Right.
Um, and so now it is, it's gone longer, but there's still some issues with what you're saying is the timing now with one sixty-nine is off. So, I don't know. That's how I got it done the last time. I don't know if that's gonna help us this time to go to the county and just say, "Hey, we got some issues."
Who do we, how do we have somebody do something?
Okay, can you define what the issue is more? I mean, I drive that area.
What I'm understanding is making your left or right, not right, 'cause it's free right, but making your left, you're, it's only allowing two or three cars.
On?
It's.
Seventeen, uh, old Eagle Creek.
Eagle Creek under two one sixty-nine?
It's the new part of Eagle Creek behind Lowe's.
Right.
And Seventeenth where they meet and get onto eighty-three. So, those were, um, only letting two or three cars through, and, and I think they're back to it, that, 'cause I, I drove it this morning, and I wanted to say it didn't stay very long, so they might be back.
Council Lewis?
Yeah, I just wanna get a couple of things straight here. Uh, Ms. Mokko said she had talked to, um, Mr. Beard about getting it done, and Mr. Lyman said he had contacted somebody at the county about getting that taken care of. We're not supposed to work through staff?
I didn't, I didn't ask him to take an action. I just told him, "Here's the concerns I'm hearing, and that's not, it's not our area." It's just not our area.
I just, I signed out, and I, I sent something to him, so.
Well, I did the same thing. I got stuck with, so. You guys are in violation, then you're in violation.
Um, other business before this board? Other business? If not, uh, Council Wyman?
Make a motion to adjourn to June twentieth, twenty seventeen at seven P M.
Second.
Uh, further discussion, 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 all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Motion passes. We are adjourned at eight twenty-nine.